Now? Okay. Today is Monday, April 13, 2015. I call the Florida County Commissioners's Court's order. Today we have Jim Sheldon from Washington Avenue Church to your invocation. You will please stand and remain standing for both judges.
Please bow, please. Father, it's a new week. We're not always that excited about Mondays, but they aren't necessary. And we know that you don't have weeks the way that we do, that you never take a day off. We know that you're always at work. Scripture tells us that you care about what happens in government, that your hand is indeed attached to government and those who lead. So we pray today, knowing that you have an interest in this. Pray for our commissioners, for our leaders, for our officials. Pray for the decisions that they wrestle with, difficult and ordinary. We pray that you would bless our city, our community, our counties, just with your hand. You can see that you are active and you are involved. Thank you, Lord, for caring about the small things, for being alongside with us as we deal with the things that come into our lives. Thank you once again for this organization. Pray that your hand will guide in Jesus' name. Amen.
We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, America, one indivisible.
Okay, instead of starting at number one, we're going to skip down to LGC number 14, so Derek can get back forth because we're handing him. Derek, if you want to come up and lead this presentation. This is provided update on the local government corporation.
And just a quick introduction to the court. As the LGC continues to meet and there are dates provided in the public forum, just as a matter of happen, I'd like to add an agenda item. I'd like to add an agenda item to keep the whole court informed. Thank you, Derek, for being here.
Thank you, Judge. Court appreciates the opportunity to be here and thank you for accommodating the agenda with us today. Get the screens up. Hope everybody can see this. What you're looking at are the current schematic concepts of the parking garage. Of course, Potter County obviously is a great partner with the local government corporation, City of Amarillo on the parking garage. But it's really beginning out where we can look at it and necessarily touch it and feel it, but we can see it well enough to talk about it. What you have on the screen right now, this is the corner of the parking garage that would basically be Sixth and Pierce. So you're seeing one of the three hard corners that there will be on the retail space looking here. And to take a move down now, we're looking down Sixth Street back towards Buchanan. The thing I would highlight on the slide right there, you see the entry-exits. A three-lane vehicular in and out to the parking garage. Difficult to pick out there, but the same place has a pedestrian portal that also brings you in and out across Sixth Street, Sixth Avenue. The important part of that, that portal lines up directly with what will be a small raised crosswalk which takes you straight across to the hotel, to the convention space, to what we're calling the inner passage or the inside passage. So that if you wish to come from the parking garage all the way to the Globe News Center, you can do the majority of that through the hotel. You'll cross Sixth, enter the hotel, work your way through the public part of the hotel, exit on Fifth Street, which is today part of the parking lot, and you'll come straight out into the Globe News Center. Kind of continuing on, this would be the second of the three hard corners. This one is at Buchanan and Sixth. So we're kind of looking facing forward to southwest here. Keep moving down. The large vertical flag sign that you see there is by the major pedestrian portal that would exit straight out onto Buchanan, providing access back around to all the retail on that frontage, around Sixth, across Buchanan, over City Hall to the stadium. Kind of coming around now to the third hard corner. This is at the corner of Seventh and Buchanan. So you're looking kind of down Seventh. You see the second of the two ingress-egress locations for the property. Also a three-lane vehicular. Does have a pedestrian portal on it. It's a little bit smaller than the one that's on Sixth Street. Flip side of this, if you could turn to the left in the drawing, flip side of that's the location where the SPS headquarters is to be constructed. Collectively running around those three sides is right at 24,000 square feet of net of retail. So that's exclusive of the pedestrian portals and the vehicular portals that we'll have there. Kind of looking down now back across on Pier Street side. The parking garage is a little different than how we started. At no point is this parking garage over any of the retail spaces. So the parking garage is basically a physically separate structure. It is built on the lot lines all the way to Seventh and all the way to Pierce. It stops short on Sixth and it stops short at Buchanan. You have a major separation wall and you have your retail component on front of it. The retail's going to be still a pretty substantial structure. It's going to be roughly 24 feet high depending on how the barricade walls get built and where the actual rooftop equipment goes. Right now, we're proposing to have two large HVAC units that will supply all of the spaces rather than literally requiring a separate set of that on top of each and every retail unit. So we'll know that more, we'll know more about that just here in the next couple of weeks. Little bit of a close-up. That actually is the nose-in parking on the first floor of the parking garage along Pier Street. We're working, this garage by code has an open facility. You have cars and some things, a pretty major fire hazard. We're trying to find a way to screen the ground level to where you can put some graphics or something similar and still meet the requirements of having the open space. And I think that that is my last one. Current status, the LGC released last week a request for qualifications. This went out to numerous local developers and brokers that deal in retail. Of course, it'll also go out to the larger universe at large. Idea behind that, since we no longer have a development partner, LGC has stepped in to assume that role. We are continuing forward with the retail. It will be built at Shell Space. We'll have a back wall, a top wall, and a front wall. Really not much more other than that than all of the utilities will be laid either on the back wall or actually in the floor as appropriate. The buildings will not even have a floor. We'll have the plumbing all available. Since we don't know who the retail is, we don't know where sinks, restrooms, sorted items must be. Leave that open. They'll lease out and do their finished work. It'll all be there. They'll put in the plumbing, set up the concrete slab, and we'll be good to go. We expect to have those back early May. May 7th, I believe, is the date at which they need to turn in their proposals. LGC will go through a process to rank that and ultimately will end up with the partner. We held a pre-meeting several weeks ago. We invited representatives of 15 different local firms that do retail development or retail brokerage. Thirteen of those were able to come and come on a short notice. So I really expect that we're going to get a good response. And I think you're going to see a pretty overwhelming local response to that. I will stand for any questions or comments.
I think I understood when you were showing me the pictures, but the entrances and exits to the parking garage are on Seventh and Sixth. Nothing's going to go out of Buchanan and Pierce.
Red, good. And I would anticipate Seventh probably converging back to a two-way.
Startup date?
We are still working as hard as we can to get construction start very end of June, very first of July. We'll see. We lost very, very little time when we went through what I think the papers have called the divorce. We went through very, very short delay. It's still running. Really where we are right now, the members of the LGC are reviewing these in greater detail, what you have on your screens, and they're in the process of, you know, sorting that out. What could we change here? What should we change there? We've actually had some relatively major modifications as a result of that. They're going to look at it again this week. My job after that will be to say it's time to quit looking. Let's make the decisions. Let's build budgets and let's go forward.
And I would add, part of the discussion with the LGC was, again, this presentation and a D and D. There was feedback allowed from all the members. So we did bid out even the size of the elevators, which I think was important in those particular discussions. So I think it was good, healthy debate, discussion to hopefully land to what this future state might be. So thank you again for being present today.
Who's going to construct it?
We don't know yet. When we finish all the plans in spec, we'll move into the contracting phase. Several different options available to us should time allow. I think it's great, it's probably what we would prefer, that there are some alternate requirements.
It looks great.
Thank you. I'm pretty pleased. I had trouble not envisioning the concept, but taking that concept from straight-line drawings into something more real. I think our A and E firms are a great company.
It doesn't look like our parking garage.
It doesn't. And that's what we've said all along.
And that's what we want, yes.
It's easy to say, now we need to show.
Yeah. Thanks, Derek.
Thank you all.
Okay. And before we get started too, I just wanted to holler out to Mike and then your guys on the ground crew, the yard. It looks absolutely great. I just wanted to thank them for all the work that they do for that. We have them pretty sharp in town.
I totally agree with that. I would pass that on.
Okay. Tell them, tell them thanks for everything. They're doing a good job. Okay. Number one, approval of minutes ready by March 23rd, 2015. County Commissioners's Court meeting.
I make a motion to be accepted minutes as pretended.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your hand. Zero. Number two, budget amendment to consider next pound amendments. We didn't. To consider next pound budget amendments for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
I do have a replacement page for page one. The first item is to recognize donations in Polk County. This second item is LEOSD money that the state is giving us for our portion of education. And that's the one we're going to correction on. Okay, most we had to share. Our other third one. This is the grant that I put in for the server for the government office. And the spiral ones, let's see, one part for public experience, the five, looks like it's going to be over budget by year-end, and JCPenney also is called your expenses. And then on the sheriff's office, we have 10,000 going into professional services and 80,000 going to public service. Wow. And the question's one.
Carrie, the, is it 80,000 or 90,000 going into the detention center prisoner care? Is that?
A total of 90,000, but we're going to add 22 smaller accounts. One of them is professional services and 80,000 is to public service.
And then the professional services, what will that do? But for what line item? Are we expecting an additional expenditure or does that have to do with the college psychiatrist that's slated?
No, no, that was already mentioned. That's just what we've been going with for the services they provide.
Okay.
Then also.
Sheriff, any insight to the 80,000 additional for?
Just this year, since October, which has been nearly 50,000 HIV medicine or HIV medicine. And that's between the four and nine. And then it's not going down. Oh, we have another one that is out there right now that will, that's going to require the same meds as well, but he's right now on medicines that he's brought in. We're waiting for a screen from the doctor in Australia where he's from. So once he runs out, we'll be putting that bill up. It's just a cost that we're near now, and we have no control.
And then Carrie, one final question on number one, the $500 donation. Where did that come from or fire insurance?
Which was it?
$500?
That was from a landowner. I believe that's the one that's from a landowner from the fire that was on Valentine's Day.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Check motion.
I move we approve the budget amendments for 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your hand. Zero. Cedar enacted from food delivery vouchers processed by county authorities office prepared from March 18th through April 8th, 2015. Checks 161391 through 161712. And wire transfers 527 to 536 and an amount totaling $470,676.80.
I move that we approve vouchers as noted by county judge for the period of March 18th through April 8th, 2015.
Second.
I have one question. Page 10, check number 161539. Amarillo and Jordan, your translation. I was curious about, this seems to be quite a lot for one case. And I was wondering, I saw it in Carrie earlier about, we use two different, two different people, two different companies right now.
We use several, but mostly.
Mostly these two. It seems a little high. Now, I'm just going back a few years when we discussed $25 to $50 per hour of time. Now they're charging a set amount.
Right.
About three hours minimum or two hours minimum?
We have one provider that charges $45 an hour with a $2 minimum, and we have another one that charges $90 an hour with two hours minimum. So they show up and it's canceled, they still get paid.
They still get paid for this. And we can change this if we like.
Yes.
I like.
There is a provision in the law for centers that let y'all set the amount and I'll be happy to hide it all behind the details on how I can change it.
I think we need to look into that in budget time perhaps to make that a set amount for any interpreter and see how we do. Because we used to, at some point, I think we even used employees sometimes, didn't we? Is that still an option?
It can. I have a feeling this bill's high because it's a probably trial. Usually because something's kept the interpreter in here a long time, but I do. So in that situation, you need to have a interpreter with certain type of certification. And the judges don't want historically not like using employees for trial purposes.
Right. I want to totally understand. It takes too long now. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, who, I know both of y'all kind of saved it in at the same time. It was Commissioner Law and Commissioner Church.
I do have one question. Page 33 of 42, check number, looks like wire number 531. Office furniture, office-wise furniture is supplied in the amount of $299.96 time clock for road and bridge. My question is if this time clock is compliant with our new time clock plus implementation, why would we be buying a time clock?
Because our current one broke, so we didn't have any way to clock in and out. And we called and asked before we bought it. We still have another month, a month and a half before they implement the new one.
Before we implemented the new time clock plus?
Yes.
Okay. So I know we have that as an agenda item, so maybe we can get an update on that a little later.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion in second. Any more questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Four one. Okay, number four, quarterly budget comparison to recognize second quarter comparison report for fiscal year 14, fiscal year 15. This is to recognize only, so if you have any questions.
I do have one question. Carrie, page 11 of 12 on this document. And again, thank you for putting this together. So it does provide a quarterly kind of snapshot of where we were this time last year as it relates to the budget. And I'm looking at fire and rescue, specifically the general operating expense. So this time last year, we were at 51,000. Today, we're at 134,000. I see the capital outlay as well, but that's to be expected with some of the renovations happening at the station. I'm unsure if there's anything significant that has changed for operating expenses where we're more than doubled at this point.
We have this fire budget grant and you've said $91,000 grant fund. It's got to do with steel, and all the equipment.
Okay. Trucks. So the grant funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, $91,000.
Okay. And then one final question. Page seven, looking at West Sixth Annex, the building repair and maintenance. Roughly this time last year, we were at 4,000. Now we're at 7, almost 8,000. If there's anything significant happening to that property for building, repair, and maintenance. I thought I remember seeing a gate being fixed.
On which property?
It's West Sixth Annex.
Glad you had that. I agree. Water, paint, that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, since we're doing that, I'll run one. Page two on the commissioners. I haven't spent a dime on that general operating expenses, but we've, last year we spent 1894 Sixth, this year 2433. What are we, what are we spending on that?
What page was that?
Two commissioners, general operating expenses. Somebody's spending money on that. I'd like to see us split that up because none of us, I don't, I haven't spent any.
I haven't seen it.
You don't see it?
I'm not seeing it from page two. Okay, page five.
Oh, page five, okay.
Oh, you got to page two.
Yeah, I got to page two. Under commissioners' expenses, general operating expenses.
What would, what would be covered under general operating expenses of commissioners?
What do you mean? Do you see a, do you see a, 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 an issue that Time Clock Plus is accumulating only the comp time, or showing only the comp time approved that accumulates at time and a half. Any comp time that accumulates at straight time, in other words, if we have benefit time, vacation time, sick time, holiday time, any unclockable type time in a pay period, any comp time then should be accumulated at straight time, and it's not showing that straight time to be dumped, if you will, into the comp time buckets. And so, we're currently asking, as we're moving through the implementation, that the departments maintain those comp time, the straight time, comp time, until we can get that resolved and get it loaded into the system. And so...
And is there a timeline of when we expect that? And the reason I ask is because that really is the vulnerable spot, is the comp time, and that has bitten us more times than once, as it relates to employee departure at Potter County. So I'm just thinking through the timeline for that correction.
I don't have a specific time we're working with Time Clock Plus, and they've not given me any clear indicator of how long it'll take or what we're going to need to do. At this time, we're at a bit of an impasse, and we're just working through those issues. I've had one, at one point, telling you it's a, it'll be a complex issue, but we can do it, and another support person said, I don't know that we can do that. And so, we're going to go back again and sit down and really hash through that specific item.
Kay, is that anything that IT, and maybe you guys are working hand in hand in this, I don't know that, but is that anything that we can lean on IT support to maybe look at what the software does to drive to that result?
We have not yet.
Okay, so maybe I reached out, but...
Yeah, it's, it's something that's set up in their software, it's something their developers are going to have to change, and probably going to release out just for us. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but I think the comp time conversation was an issue we knew going into it, so I'm surprised, not an issue, a vulnerable spot that we knew going into that we wanted software to help resolve. So I'm surprised that we're this far along and we're hearing that, but that's my kind of thought here onto the side.
Okay, it's the straight time program that is...
Another issue too that's come up several employees, like from Road and Bridge, our department, Sildes, anybody that has employees that clock in and are apt to leave their office numerous times in a vehicle, they have to go and clock out and then go do that and come back, clock back in, or personal.
No, because they'll be on the clock for the duration, and that's, and that's why we were waiting to bring them on until we had the capability and the codes set up to do the auto deduct for the lunch times, because they may leave in the morning and be at other points I've known for the balance of the day and not come back again until the end of the day to clock out. And so, we needed the ability to auto deduct for lunch times, and we...
We don't have to come back in and clock out for lunch and get back out of the field.
Right. We've, we've, we've just developed that ability on Friday, and we haven't built the back, built the codes necessary to do it yet, but we will be doing it as soon as paid all this.
What about emergencies? Through, through the years, we do not go clock in and respond to an emergency. We automatically go to the emergency, take care of it, and then work on the paperwork. So how do we address that?
Same way. You would go address the emergency, take care of business, and then it would be done as an edit to the system before, just like you did now, you go back after the fact and know that time, and it'll be done as an, and edit to the system to show that there was an emergency and you...
Okay, I'm assuming you're going to have a departmental meeting to vet out all this detail, is that right?
There'll be training over the department.
We've had concerns, that's why.
But maybe, maybe a preliminary meeting is a better way to...
We can, we can do that as well. We are, these are the first stage of the more complex, larger departments, and so as those needs arise, we'll meet the needs and have additional meetings or whatever we need to do.
Okay, and if we can't get a resolve, we can bring the package.
Yes, sir. And that's why I brought it up, because people have been talking to me about it, so that's why I came up. Okay, okay. Any other questions, any concerns?
As it relates to, I know you've talked about stage five being fire and rescue and road and bridge, stage six, oh, and maintenance, yes, I'm sorry.
And we had originally listed the stage six as Sheriff's Office and Detention Center, and at our last update, we talked about that county attorney and district attorney were now coming on, and we will insert those into stage six prior to Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. Also, during this month, during the month of April, we will go back to all of the departments that initially either did not respond or declined to participate and attempt to get those departments on board. And depending on the size of, and the response to that, we may add another tier in there to bring those folks on. We do intend to bring Sheriff's Office and Detention Center as the last departments to come on because of their size and complexity.
And did you give a date for the stage five? Would you expect that to be live? Originally, it was slated for March eighteenth, and that's the fire and rescue, road and bridge, and maintenance.
Right. It depends upon when the kiosks become available for them and are set up. We're having to do some additional backend work that should be done by the end of the week or midweek next week, and then depending on what their schedules are and what the needs are as we move through the training, then we'll get those on. But I don't have a concrete date because there are some new parts.
And then the two that I have, just at least as a side note, that the commissioners were overseas is collection and elections administration that I don't see on the list just yet.
They're already on.
Okay.
Collections, collections went on as part of stage two and went live on four-twenty-eight.
Perfect.
Elections went on as part of stage three and went live on December twenty-second.
Okay, thank you.
Do you happen to have any plans for that little office down in the hall? Little office down in the hall.
Thank you.
Well, absolutely. Okay, you know, I know that you have mentioned your intent to come on your, your whole area, and we will bring y'all in on the tier. We'll visit with everybody again officially. I wanted to do them all at one time during the month of April, so we can just go down the list and go back to everyone who either declined or did not respond by department, not by person, right?
Okay.
Initially, okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Kay. Number seven, Insurance Advisory Committee to Consider and Act Upon the Recognition of the Insurance Advisory Committee to Adopt Resolution Option Number Two in Response to the Affordable Care Act Maximum Out-of-Pocket Requirement Resulting in Synchronized Plan Benefit Year Prorated Deductible and Reimbursement as State and Texas Association of Counties Correspondence Date Forward to Fifteen.
Hell, what's that?
Okay, as, as you all know, the Affordable Care Act is an ongoing process that we are involved in, and has parts of the act that are implemented at different times. The Affordable Care Act requires that all non-grandfathered plans with plan years beginning on or after January the first track all member costs for individual services related to essential health benefits as an overall integrated maximum for the year. Affordable Care Act requires that that maximum be set at the six thousand, six hundred dollars total cost per person and thirteen thousand, two hundred per family as an overall maximum out of pocket. As a result of that legislation, Texas Association of Counties went back on January first and made changes to how their benefits are calculated on all plans, all the pooled plans for non-grandfathered plans renewing on October first or after. And to ensure compliance with healthcare reform, they synced up the, the plan year and the benefit year for all of those groups. Currently, Potter County has a plan year that begins on October first and runs through September thirtieth, and a deductible year and maximum out of pocket year that corresponds with the calendar. So it's January first through December thirty-first. So Texas Association of Counties brought both of those years in line. In order to do that, Texas Association of Counties prorated the deductibles and the out of pocket maximums because it resulted in a short plan year for deductible and out of pocket, because it would run from January first, the prorated year runs from January first through September thirtieth, and then we'll be in line with the October first plan year from that point forward. However, Potter County is not a pooled group, so what the change that Texas Association of Counties made was inadvertently applied to Potter County. We didn't have to make that change until October with our new plan year, but we got locked in with their pooled groups. So consequently, all of our deductibles and maximum out of pockets were prorated with all of their pooled groups, and, but we didn't receive notification of it because we weren't a pooled group, and it shouldn't have happened to us. We were made aware of it when we started having questions from a couple of employees, noticing that their deductible showed the prorated amount instead of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible, and we thought it was some kind of an error. When we contacted Texas Association of Counties, they provided all the paperwork, and we found that we had been locked in with their pooled groups. So we went back to Texas Association of Counties to determine what our options were, how do we fix the error, because it was truly a premature shift or it wasn't necessary yet. And they provided us with two options for correction. The first option is just correct the error, remove the prorated amounts, go back to what our plan says, it's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible and a three-thousand-dollar maximum out of pocket. And that's the first option. The result of that option would be that we would change that deductible and out of pocket maximum moving forward. So, any employee that has met their prorated deductible already, or their prorated out of pocket already, would have additional deductible and out of pocket to be met moving forward, because it would be reset to the, the original seven-fifty and three thousand dollars. I asked for a report to see what kind of impact that would have to the plan. Through the end of February, we had at least eighty members who had met their prorated deductible, which is five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars instead of the seven-fifty, or the, the co-share maximum, and the prorated co-share maximum or out of pocket maximum is two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars as opposed to the regular three thousand that is actually as our plan stated. So those employees, those eighty-plus employees, and this is through the end of February, we would have up to whatever date we notify them to, to make that change, and they'd get their system reset. Those employees would have additional out of pocket and deductibles to meet. So that's one choice. And then in October, we would have to look at syncing that up so that we can monitor and measure that full out of pocket amount moving forward to be in compliance with healthcare reform. The second option is leave the prorated benefits in place. Go ahead, you know, leave the, the years synced up as TAC has done with their pooled groups, leave the prorated deductibles, which are the five-sixty-three and two thousand, two hundred and fifty out of pocket maximum in place for the balance of this year. And then, because it was an error by TAC, on September the thirtieth, they would run a report to see how many employees met their out of pocket maximums, the prorated out of pocket maximums and/or deductibles for the year. And then Texas Association of Counties would make whole Potter County by writing a check for a hundred and eighty-seven dollars per person who has met the deductible, that prorated deductible, because by changing the deductible, prorating the deductible to five-eighty-three, the plan starts paying out the co-insurance benefits earlier, which could mean that the, the plan was out more money. And so, Texas Association of Counties, realizing that, would agree to make the county whole and pay the hundred and eighty-seven dollars per person who hit that five-hundred-and-sixty-three-dollar deductible. And that would result in a prorated lower deductible for the shortened balance of the plan year for employees, and the hundred and eighty-seven dollars per person who's met the deductible reimbursement by Texas Association of Counties. Option two, or the latter of those two options, is the option that the insurance advisory committee is recommending that we adopt and accept. The only real shortfall to that option is that we will no longer be able to administer a fourth quarter carryover on deductibles, because that would prohibit an accurate accounting of those out of pockets. And so, if we were to continue the fourth quarter carryover, TAC or, or number other would be able to ensure compliance with healthcare reform and that integrated out of pocket. So again, the insurance advisory committee met on April ten, and it is the recommendation of the committee to move forward with option two of the resolutions listed here. Either of these options will require, once decided upon by court, will require verification to each employee explaining, you know, what happened and what the resolution option was chosen.
Kay, I do have a question. Even if option two is the recommendation, and I'm, I'm seeing and hearing here that TAC will kind of foot the difference, make us whole at one-seventy, one-eighty-seven, how does that compare to if an employee's benefits have now been met and they're kicking in the percentage of pay, the claims are being paid at a higher rate because they've met their deductible? Or is it still the eighty-twenty co-share after that?
It's still the eighty-twenty, if they're in that work.
Right.
It's an eighty-twenty co-share after that.
Okay.
Really, the only difference is that eighty-twenty split kicks in earlier at five-sixty-three instead of seven-fifty, and Texas Association of Counties is agreeing to make whole Potter County by, by reimbursing that other hundred and eighty-seven dollars to our plan. And it's possible that, you know, we may have employees that would hit the five-sixty-three, but in reality would not have gotten to the seven-fifty. We don't know, but we'll be made whole at the full one-eighty-seven.
Confusing, that could be great.
It kind of felt like it might be the easiest thing for the employee in what gets hurt because if we get the option.
There won't be any additional out of pocket required to meet the deductible for those employees who have already met their five-sixty-three, or the, the three thousand dollar max.
I would agree with HR, Commissioner Gillen, that was what our committee had decided, that it would probably have less effect on our employees itself. That was why we chose to recommend the second option. With that, I, I move that we accept the second option and TAC pay the hundred and eighty-seven dollars on those individuals who have reached the five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars.
Twenty-two.
I'm seven.
Any other more discussion? We have a motion second. All the paper ratio back in, please. All the favorable ratio back in, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be deal with the way.
Yeah. Number eight, county and district parks association Texas to recognize certificate of completion awarded to Caroline Woodburn for completing required 20 hours of continuing education 2014 as prescribed in section 51.605 of the Texas government code. So recognized. And number nine, budget calendar fiscal year 16. To recognize proposed budget calendar fiscal year 16. Carrie.
Just wanted to take the other, the exception of some of the dates when we get our budget in, you know, just the same as one slash here, there is one exception that you understand too, when your commissioners will be getting problems of budget options about a month prior to our meeting. So we should think, just like those.
Excellent.
This year, I would also like to implement a budget issue thing that I would like the preliminary budget to go out to, known to the commissioner, don't want each commissioner to be assigned certain departments they are under commissioner's court to go visit with, as well as some related officials to go visit with and see what the needs are, what the wants are, what the resource is, how much we're going to cut, and you know, things like this. So that would actually speed up the process a little bit and help it just to TAC. Okay, we will try to stick to this calendar.
I can add a comment about that. That's fine to do, but remember that putting together the proposed budget becomes a commissioner's court, he is the job of county judge. So, I mean, I have no problem with the end of it, but it is.
That's strictly what it is input.
The final decision is about what the proposed budget is, is the county judge.
I'm not sweating at all.
I know, I just wanted to, I wasn't really speaking.
No, no.
I wanted that clear in the department heads as well.
Commissioner, thanks for putting that together.
Yes. Carrie, I just have a question on the date. So July 27th is the date that I saw slated to start our review or workshop, as we traditionally have called it, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I did notice September 3rd being the evening public meeting for input, so thank you for putting that on there. That has been attended the last couple of years.
And do we need to have this here in this courtroom? Is that good for everybody? The budget, Carrie's here?
Yes.
You can hear better, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Workshop, Steve?
We did the actual workshops instead than going to last year. I don't know how the department's.
The feedback about the sound in there was difficult and hard to follow the screen with the Excel documents. I'm looking to you guys, share everything, yes? Okay.
Personally, I'd like to say a little bit more. It's easier, we've got tables and things that we can have information out in front of us and that kind of stuff.
Try to work something out with the court on the sixth floor to use the ties from the setup up there. You'll see how many 30 people count, 30 people. Second floor of this building, no area of court, master or adjacent area we set up.
It's a classroom. There's no tables, right?
Yeah.
Oh, there are tables. Okay, we'll consider that too. Thank you.
There is one assumption I haven't covered, y'all, maybe do it, it's our next meeting. I'm assuming that the meeting after the morning, they will be on Monday, maybe Friday.
Do you mean Tuesday instead of Monday?
Right, that's what I have marked on this calendar, just as an assumption.
Oh, let's do that, let's do that right now. Let's go ahead and decide.
Sure. Actually, if I approve the calendar, you probably would get that.
Okay, so we can go ahead and do that now without a specific mention of. So we're having it on Tuesday the 26th instead of Monday the 25th, correct? That suits this court. Everybody else?
I thought we addressed that before.
Well, I don't think it's, I think it's something we do every year, just to make sure.
I thought we made it into policy, the day after the holiday, but that's fine.
We should make it, we should make it a policy, that every holiday, the fall of Monday, we did, I probably wouldn't hear.
It was in the calendar.
Okay, so we recognize that, okay. And number 10, there are no refunds that were just in the burden that took back on there. Let's, I want to skip down to former Nicole sitting down there in the office. Number 13, fire station project, let's do that real fast so she can get back to work too. So do you hear a report from Park Hill Smith and Cooper, Inc., engineering and architectural firm, concerning the 50% construction documents and taking action necessary?
While they're getting that set up, just to kind of make everybody where we're at. Last time we left off, we was in the time, uh, documents at 100%. We had one-on-one meetings with the commissioners at Park Hill Smith and Cooper. So currently right now, while Ms. Caraway 100% versus 50% construction documents are open.
And this is very important, there's more to be said. Uh, I think that I used to call Caraway, I'm part of the doctor's opening department for the river right now. Um, I'm here to update you and let you all know, covering on fire station number three right now, now that state is on track. We extended the 50% CD set on April 3rd. We've already received reliance and comments from Mr. Mykhead, which will be addressed in the next phase of 75% CDs, which we will present to Mr. Head on April 28th. I give you all a schedule, it's highlighted, either 1 through 7 is complete. And 8 through 11 is kind of our ongoing process right now, uh, review of the 50% CD documents and are working on the 75% CD documents. And 12 and on are future processes. From the 100% CD phase, there has been an OPC increase of $8395 construction, energy construction costs. And that's just from the different things that have come in our process. I can go over any questions you have over that, as well as any questions you have about the process of the schedule. I also have the plans, if any, if any.
You have any questions on what she's presented so far?
Just a quick question for confirmation from the commissioners' court. Who currently sits on that committee to evaluate the station? Is it Commissioner Long? I don't have questions as it pertains to the documents, other than obviously the cost of construction continuing to go up. So with the increase, we're slated at 1.5 million. And I just want to make sure that the court is very aware, according to my notes, and Mike, please keep me honest here, that does not include septic, utilities, a communication tower, water well, and that was originally slated for a budget of $700,000. And I'm looking at Carrie to keep me honest and in line here, so other than the obvious that I have severe concerns that we continue to keep moving over budget, I just don't want that to be a surprise as we get towards, towards the end. And I feel like I have made that comment, but this continues to shift. In my opinion, this will be over $2 million before we're said it done, which was not our intent when we said, fix this station.
Let me, let me say something to that commissioner.
Thanks.
You went over budget when you had established a budget of $700,000. This thing's been over budget all along. The, what we presented to you all on schematic design on your OPC at that time was around probably 1.2, 1.3 million. This project, yes, you will continue to see changes. The OPC that's been presented to you at this time, I've got it also broken down. You put those additional costs along with your grocery list, I still, that's made up around 1.8 million. That's where we, that's where I feel that we could be going with the project. The cost that you see right now, the OPC that is presented to you, we've had some increases in there, your increase is actually of $123,000 on the OPC that is presented to you. We had a reduction of $13,690, for which your total difference between that and the last OPC was probably $92,000. The, you're going to continue to see these. We had made some changes to our redline for the documents that would be coming to you at 75%, 75%. We've added back in some side lighting, we've added back in some fencing. These are the things we've just added back in to weigh the cost, to see which is the best way to go. It's not saying that this is the actual direction that we go. A $98,000 increase right there, if you don't mind, go to your OPC.
Just again, can I get some help on the screen to show that on the flat white? You would like us on the OPC?
Can you go to OPC division 33, probably last division?
Next one, thank you.
This particular vision right here, being exterior improvements, at least speaking of, this right here dealt with the concrete we looked at after the project. We had looked at concrete, y'all are aware of this, at the last meeting we had, we got concrete versus pavement. The bed cost came back in as we asked them to put concrete in, to see what is going to cause concrete versus pavement. So what I directed the architect to do, and to call on them, is to go through and put in the base bid, things outside of the scope of work to where you're going to do, concrete as your base bid, asphalt as your alternate. We'll get those costs in, we'll look at the difference between them. As it stands right now, from the original grocery list that Pat and I put together, we have that additional cost already covered within your grocery list. It's just showing on Park Hill Smith and Cooper's cost, and we have it on ours. So we need to decide at one point which category we move into. This is something the court has already recognized, is to move forth with that type of driveway. So Commissioner McGill, we are still investigating these costs. I will guarantee you, you come back at 75%, you will see some different costs, could be up, could be down, just back and forth all over the place. We've got to get, we've got to get somewhere to look at these costs before we can actually make the best decision for it.
And what I just asked quickly for Jason to share on the screen, and then I'll be quiet here for the court. But when this was originally discussed during budget time, which may have been two fiscal years now, going back in my memory, this is what we vetted out. We looked at pictures of all the stations, and this is the one that obviously got a lot of visibility. This is the station we're currently talking about. Those are pictures. We looked at the fleet that we currently have in there, so you'll see at the top, the engine, the rescue, the pumper, the replacement value. God forbid something happened to that piece of property. And what's the amount of inventory we have there? What would this cost our tax pay? So that was slated at $750,000, and then 11 volunteers that are in and out of that station. So we brought this to the court with these pictures and said, this can't, we can't sustain this. And the court at the time said, we can't, and started to slot money for the improvement. So when I speak to, this goes over budget, this is kind of what we were talking about. Fix this, let's make this better, this isn't acceptable. So as we transition from this to the current plans, which I think they're beautiful plans, but they are two-story, they have an elevator, at least as it equates to my vote of what I voted for, that was not my expectation. So I just want to be clear, as we progress through this, that I have concerns that we continue to move over our budget. And I'll be quiet here, so thank you very much.
On the other side of that?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that, you know, we're all concerned about the cost, but we have a need. Look at these pictures and you can see that right now, according to these figures, we have $750,000 inventory. We have inventory, fire inventory that is outside, that we can't get undercover, that will be put into this facility. So that's not, we're not counting all the inventory that this is going to do. If you look at the county and the growth of this county, it's growing west. And that's where this is going to be able to cover. And I think we're serious about serving our people. We have to give this serious consideration, even though we know it costs more than what was originally brought. And I wish we could get it for what you originally brought the cost to us at. But you look at the last city fire station that they built, it was two and a half million dollars. And it's not going to look any better. It does not look any better than what this one. I think we're, we're trying to do the best we can.
And, and we need to, we need to. This, this picture you have up here right now, it's embarrassing to say that that's Potter County property, and we allowed it to look like that for so long. So we're going to do something better, we're going to make it better, and we're going to spend some money doing it. Now, there are some options that I know we can go to. We have capital funds, project money we can dip into, we can put it in this coming budget to move this more funds in there. There's several things we can do, so it needs to be done.
I think so as well. I'm, I'm like hearing this going back to the initial draft, I consider it sort of the draft of betting of how much it would entail, and I think that's sort of always very obvious, even as far as the construction cost in the area, but there always are an increase of the expenses or choices, budgets, after you get into it. And depending on the needs, and I think Church explained it very well, we're going to have probably the crystal rim of factors as is needed, because we have been so far along behind the curve in addressing those issues. Growth is certainly going, there are, and there are citizens really harping and harping on ensuring that they are protected. So I know where you're coming from, I know that the budget, and certainly we want to ensure that fiduciary responsibility is intact, but sometimes we got to kind of just get outside the house a little bit, on the front end, and having to do it later, back end. So I think that, I know Mike and Pat and the chief were working very hard for this to ensure that they count all the pennies and the dollars and making sure we don't go more than what is necessary. But, you know, having been out there, having viewed it, having watched what they're doing, and laying that out, we want to ensure that we don't have to come back later and say, well, we should have done this, we should have done that, and that's going to add more cost to it. I know the elevator is an issue that keeps me being a little bit of a concern, but I'm not that, that totally concerned with it now, concerning what the needs will, will occur and justify. And certainly by having that concern, that two-story, we want to make sure that we have that built in order to accommodate visitors and the lack of vegetation that will be still in that facility.
And one thing, Commissioner, please don't take my comments as me not speaking to the need. I took these pictures, I went with the chief and I took these pictures, I absolutely believe in us addressing the need, so please don't take my comments from that perspective. But from my lens, it does seem very elaborate from where we started, in terms of how do we correct this? And I guess I partially feel like that, because there are other stations that are currently even still being addressed, so the need will continue.
Elaborate to the degree of where we were. I agree.
Or I think just elaborate where we.
But necessarily not where we, where we need to be. I'm not all that sure, but I don't see a whole lot of bells and whistles and things that would put it in an escalator-like type of model, more than what it ain't done after now. Sure, it's going to enhance, and it's certain, but you've come a long way. I mean, from the third floor to where it's going to be facilitating, I think, great. The citizens of Potter County will be proud of the facility once we have it, and the needs will be ensured, be met by those who on a daily basis put their lives and their efforts into protecting the citizens.
Agreed. Anything else?
Make you aware, the next court presentation as planned will be, maybe you left your first meeting, you left 75% occupancy. To make you aware, the next court presentation as planned will be, maybe you left your first meeting, you left 75% documents. Prior to that, for you to review, to go through your OPC. Then after that, the next one will be the first meeting in June, and hopefully to have the final cost due services in July. Y'all consider where we go from there?
Okay. And did I understand that the other fire station number six, is it, has come in along really well?
Yes, I would hear that.
And, and one more, I want to encourage all of the court to, uh, make those differences of going out there and, and seeing as much of the work that's being done and, uh, getting a firsthand view.
Thank you, thank you. No action taken on this, ma'am? Okay, number 11, contract detention center psychiatric services to approve the contract for psychiatric services for inmates in an detention center.
We've got, uh, this is just putting in place the arrangement with the sheriff's office. I need some doctors to provide some services that we can budget, but we wanted to have some things in writing, so this is the commission, only the commissioners court have put back agreements, so. And, and David pointed out to me is that we specifically mentioned exception here, professional services position. Uh, so, we don't have to bid any, in other words, we don't have to bid, we just made the agreement here. So, it's pretty straightforward agreement, uh, as you can see. I would ask one thing, I, I inadvertently attached a whole lot more stuff on the, uh, duty, but, but that. And so, uh, just hang on to that or you can give it back to me, cause I don't, just because there's, uh, social security issues and things like that, it doesn't need to be, I certainly don't want to overinteract with this. I forward it not thinking that, forgetting that that information would be in there, but, but you've got plenty of information about her credentials and stuff. Should be a real asset. I don't know if she already started working here.
Yes.
It's going to be a good thing if it turns around.
Her last name is O'Hanlon?
Dr. O.
Dr. O.
Sheriff, I just have a question of how will the psychiatrists, and maybe it's more procedural, how are they working with the mental health coordinator? What's that kind of handoff process like? I did see the hours of operation.
Sharon is kind of overs, is doing the screening of the worst of the worst. And then when she comes in on Thursdays, they set those aside for her to see. And we're hoping that her diagnosis and recommendations will be carried over to TPC, so we don't have to wait that two to three week process and giving somebody some help. And hopefully we can get her recommendations through TPC and the Bay of Texas on board sooner and faster for the, for the inch.
Can she prescribe meds?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Sheriff, how many, is there another county that you could recommend that is doing something similar? It'd be interesting to benchmark that.
Well, I don't know of one of, of our level. Uh, Dr. O came from Harris County, uh, she was actually on board down there for their psychiatric, medical ward down there. Of course, we're talking jails with over 10,000 inmates as well. So, I mean, as far as one of our size, I don't know. And that, we wanted to kind of start a small one, because we knew the cost was going to be enormous. Uh, which at $200 an hour, we think is probably a pretty reasonable. So we'll see how it evaluated, see how, so far it's been very well. But as far as your question, uh.
What does she do the rest of the time?
She actually works for the DA.
Okay.
So this is kind of like a, somebody bootlighting, who's, who's all on the side.
Dave, do you have another contract, original contract for you to sign?
Uh, I think we can just sign this one, I've, I've got, just attach it. And that's, yeah, and that's, uh, that's, we get you to sign. Let me just do that, obviously.
Okay, Mr. Church, can I ask this, help? Um, I make a motion to approve the contract for psychiatric services for inmates in detention center. Second, second. Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand.
It'll be interesting, Sheriff, to see how this unfolds.
Well, we're hoping that it doesn't, we're, we're kind of stepping out on a limb to get help for the people that need it. But we don't want to take away from TPC, we want them to think, oh, we're going to run, you know, we want to do that, you know. Hopefully, they'll continue their services.
Well, all in all, it gets her, um.
Well, to help our, our facility with our inmates, our officers handling the inmates that are in there, because they, she can prescribe the medicine to help them be better while we're in, that's, so, I mean, that's one.
Before we get to the mental health department going, yeah.
Yeah, this is a really good, this is a really good thing. I get it kind of, since we kind of work both ends of the criminal side and the mental health side, so that's going to really.
It's going to be good. Have faith. Okay, number 12, burn ban, to consider an act upon closing the burn ban for a period of 16, 90 days, due to bad conditions. So, yeah, there we go. Dave, anything you want to add to this, or one knows we need to do it, so.
We are getting ready to have a couple of days of rain, but this weekend with the conditions we have, we still had three grass fires over the weekend. So we're still burning, until we get a, until we get a good solid greenup, we're still in bad season.
But, but what are the numbers we're looking at right now?
I looked at the KB, KBDI, 300 to 400 is where it had us, I looked at it just like late last night.
Yes, yeah, it is. But we've got a lot of dead still out, especially in the north part in our, in our big lands. And the three this weekend were all ivy strikes.
There's nothing you can do about that.
Ivy comes across and doesn't rain good and the wall is going on a grass fire.
I move that we compose an act upon a burn ban for a period of 16, 90 days, second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero, thank you. Um, number 15, formal proposal renewal, to consider an act upon renewing formal proposal number 1032-11, independent auditor services for additional one-year term from 6/1/2015 through 5/31/2016. Term extension and pricing is as outlined in the original proposal.
Um, this is the fifth year of our five-year contract that we have an option to renew with the same outside of the period to do our financial reports for Carrie. Um, the price from last year to this year is unchanged, uh, it's been increased the last two years. So, um, we're recommending with Carrie's consent to, to renew it and use all of it.
I make a motion that we approve proposal 1032-11, independent auditor services for additional year from 6/1/2015 through 5/31/2016.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Number 16, formal bid renewal, to consider an act upon review, renewing formal bid number 1087-14, painting and surface refinish services for additional one-year term from 5/1/2015 through 4/20/2016. Pricing is unchanged.
This is the second year of a, a three-year, uh, bid we put out for painting and service refinishing for the historical buildings. I know, uh, Mike's group has used this quite a bit, and they, the contractor's been really good to work with. So, there aren't any increases in prices starting 5/1. Uh, there may be some in 2016, because his bid was based on increases in his insurance. Um, and his insurance goes from year to year. So, um, actually it's cheaper this way, because he could have just built something in, um, not knowing what that increase is and just build us for the whole year, but he's going to keep it the same until he finds out his taxes are reversed.
If they do, they'll, they'll come back to court.
The motion?
I, uh, move that the new formal bid, uh, 1087-14, painting and surface refinish services for additional one-year term from 5/1/2015 through 4/20/2016. Those prices are unchanged from the previous contract.
Second.
Mr. Kelly. I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero, thank you. Number 17, surplus property auction, to consider an act upon improving the attached list of surplus property items that are no longer usable to be sold in auction.
Our, our storage is full, and so we're making a whole auction to, to get rid of some items, and so I'm just asking approval for, so. We, we will give all department heads a chance to go look at it one last time before we sell it.
And then David, and I think I ask this every time, but we do also send an email out to the nonprofits?
We don't until, until we sell it first. We're not allowed to give it away, and whatever doesn't sell at that point, we will send it on the nonprofit.
Can you explain why we have four Xbox gaming consoles?
We do get. The sheriff saw this next to him. No, this is trained, it's trained.
Out of, out of head coordination, yeah.
No, this is unclaimed property. We do sell unclaimed property, uh, or, or forfeiture seizures, so this is probably some of the, some of those items that were seized. Especially unclaimed property on, on evidence basis, if they don't want claims, it's under a certain dollar limit.
I'm thinking about, um.
One one for your office, I'll save you.
I do, we have a lot of downtown.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, proposed list of surplus property items no longer usable to be sold at auction.
I second. Give a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. One item, to consider an act upon the following item, road bridge deployment of Roy Sandy Burcom, road maintenance detective effective today. Um, need a motion on that one, please?
Move that we approve the, the informant Roy Sandy Burcom as road maintenance detective effective April 13th, to go this year.
For the second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. I think everything you want to talk about today, nothing?
Unless anybody has any questions, I don't need to talk.
We don't need a second session today. Jail report, we have 479 citizens in our jail, 84 female, none of whom are in shelters. Any insurance side?
Nothing to report. Uh, Dave, have we heard anything at all from, uh, our, uh, president, the, the board's, uh, especially in engineering and?
No, I haven't.
Well, two weeks ago, we had, we had the engineer, um, impartial engineer at the both parties that could do out to the property to do their evaluation, so we're waiting for, we saw a report.
And then Judge, just a quick reminder, our next court will be at the Santa Fe, uh, location in the auditorium. It is our county government day, so thank you to each of you that are participating. Uh, but we will have a representative from each school sitting along the court, um, kind of as we did in the past, and I did let your office know to get additional packets ready.
Do you have names?
Um, I do, and I'll get those to your office. Uh, we also are expecting roughly 80 students throughout the day and their sponsors. And, um, if you're able to join us for breakfast and that meet and greet, the superintendent will also be here to give a welcome, along with the commissioners, to, um, spread some excitement about the day and about county government. So thank you again for those that are letting us invade your space for the day for those students. And anything you want to add, Commissioner, or the committee that I missed?
I don't like to brag on a young man that his name was, uh, Mr. Smith. But anyway, he sat with me two years ago, and he was a senior at Island Park High School at, at that, at that time. He's graduating from WT for the horse this spring, two years, can you believe that?
Now, we're ready, on time, Commissioner.
Leanne, did you just need a head count for the, for the breakfast and lunch?
Everyone's done really well, but if you haven't yet, please get that in, and you can draw funds today on the left.
Has, uh, Commissioner Kelly given you any money yet, or that, I'm just curious?
I will take care of the doughnuts.
He's taking the doughnuts.
Oh, he's getting the doughnuts, okay.
Yeah.
I guess if that is all, Commissioner Court, this is your turn.
Thank you.